Okay, call to order, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to our December tenth, Tiberian School Committee meeting. Is anyone signed up for open forum? I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
All those in favor? Dr. Sanquioni? Okay. That was fast. Ladies, welcome and congratulations. We are now going to recognize our state champions girls soccer team. And I'd like to welcome our the members of our legislative delegation, Representative Canario, Representative Edwards, Senator Philag, Senator De Palma, and Representative Sevigny send their regrets. So I don't know if we're gonna go with the coach first?
It went into seven, yeah, all the way to seven, yeah. Yeah, not how we planned it, but we'll take it. We would've liked to do it right, right from the start, get it over with, no overtime, but we did. So we'll take it. Alright, let me just first by saying thank you for the invitation to honor these girls. They put a lot of hard work from August nineteenth, when we started, to November ninth, when we finished. Ninety-degree weather, ninety-five-degree weather when we started. And as the ones that went to the finals, right, it was, you had hand warmers in your gloves because it was cold. So we, big, big change. We played in the rain, we played, practiced in the rain, in the mud, like, these girls drying their shoes so they can get to, so they can play the next day. So, but they put so much work into this season. And the hard work they did from last year to this year, they deserve it. And it showed. It did. Their work showed by coming out, being undefeated. We finished the season undefeated, with one tie, eighteen, eighteen oh and one, one tie. We only let up three goals all season. Which is a feat to begin with, right? Being, went to the last week of the season, scoreless. No one scored on us, and we let up two goals and then won in the finals. So, on top of that, sixteen shutouts. Like, that's, the, these girls just came up with everything. Wouldn't, wouldn't let anyone go near their goal, wouldn't let anyone score. Played as a team. That, and a feat, is, is, is good. But then you throw in that they scored a hundred and nine goals against. Like, so, like, they just phenomenal, right? We had the second, Mariah was the second-leading school, goal scorer in the state. Like, records kinda going all over the place, so. Coming from last year. I mean, we, this is continued from last year. As you guys know, we won it last year. We haven't, we've lost, record from last year is thirty-five, two and one. So thirty-five wins in two years. Where they came off of the last few seasons, before that, they had two wins, they had, like, and we ended up with thirty-five in the last few seasons, so. This all is done because they're a team, on top of the team. You have to, I have to give thanks to the parents that are here too, and the parents, 'cause without them, bringing them to practice for preseason and all that, this doesn't happen. So, I just wanna say thank you to the parents that are here and the ones that aren't here, so. Alright. I can start with these.
So I don't know if we could ask our delegation to speak as well? I think you guys have a citation or something, and we could sort of do them at the same time.
We could, yeah, that works.
So Senator Philag, me?
Personally, I'd like to say a few words on behalf of Senator De Palmer and Sevigny, who unfortunately can't be here, 'cause their school funding formula, and Senator, I mean Representative Edwards. They can speak for themselves. But I've had distinct honor and pleasure of watching these girls play three times this year. I went to their first game, and they won very easily. And then the number-one scout, number-one supporter, Fran Lima, asked me and said, "You're on my list now, so you're gonna have to start coming to the games." And so I went to the classical game, which was a outstanding game where they won one to nothing. I believe, or two to one, one of the two. Two to one. And then I actually went to the finals again this year. I went to the finals last year, when you won one to nothing in Johnston, when you beat a team. And then I went to the Cranston Stadium against the sort of home team, Cranston East. And that was a thrilling, outstanding game.
I thought you girls were gonna win very easily, but we provided a tough competition. And at one point, there was a, maybe ten-minute mark or less, where they were down one to nothing. And thank God, Mariah and Rayos came through to the next school. And all the girls played well, didn't go overtime, and watched all the penalty kicks. It was outstanding to see the camaraderie and teamwork, and just going on and off. So, congratulations, so. I think you guys have a big fan right there, because it sounds like he's been following you right. Oh, you're playing soccer, it's probably a foul. There wasn't no, from the inside. Congratulations to all of you. That's a, that's a huge, huge entertainment, because you put a lot of work into getting where you are, and that's, that's, that's big. And you all deserve a big congratulation.
Okay, so we've got, you did by, by name, and we have your names and your, by your number. So remember your numbers, and we're pretty sure we'll, we're gonna call you all by your name. So we have, Alexa, for you?
Good luck.
Yeah, so if you get a blank envelope, your certificate's on its way.
Yeah. Mine, the tiger.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Renee Barrett?
Be careful.
Congratulations again.
The tiger will get you.
Congratulations, honey.
Mikael Andrews? Corner, do a break-up.
I'm gonna do before the tiger.
Maybe the queen? Emma Loes?
Congratulations, honey.
Our first one.
What a soccer tournament, taken out by the tiger.
Exactly. You can dodge defenders, you can get around our tigers.
Congratulations.
Oh wait a minute. Did she really play?
Hmm?
I bet you didn't tell us, you were coming through the line. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Now shake your arm.
I added to everybody, I think I have five hundred grandchildren.
Avijay Almavich?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Chulis.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I love the shoes.
Congratulations, honey.
Madison Mello?
Congratulations. Congratulations, Millie? Ms. Mello, congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations. You look just like very much. You have to circle around this to that.
Congratulations on a very important.
Thank you so much.
Be careful.
Yes, congratulations, thank you.
Your girls did it, you did it.
Thank you.
Since we always like to come bearing smaller gifts, we have a check for the Cassett School as well while we're here.
Okay.
So we can either drop it off to the school.
We can have our new director of finance take that on her behalf, this young lady.
They always like to get their hand off.
Exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
And this check was for, they approached the legislators during the season, because they had, unfortunately, to have sufficient funds for a yellow bus to bring it to the State House or a State House store. So this is for the fourth graders at the Cassett to have a tour of the State House.
Good, thank you.
Mrs. Robb?
Thank you.
Thank you.
An alarm goes off if you try to leave the library with a check.
Hope you brought your staff.
Congratulations.
Alright, thank you. So, again, well done, ladies. We expect to see those of you who are not seniors here next year for another championship. We may be placing some bets next year, so, no pressure. Yeah, we're gonna bet the entire school department budget, actually.
That's an easy one.
Of five hundred dollars, alright. Alright, so.
Thank you.
Congratulations again.
Alright, so we are moving up to item twelve B, and we will reconvene in the auditorium for the One to World presentation. Okay, so now I'm gonna open it up to the committee to ask any questions of Dr. Sanquioni about the One to World. Which he may, they may have. Ms. Pave?
Have any questions?
Ms. Black? Ms. Farner?
No, thank you for inviting us to such a wonderful presentation. Every, every one of the speakers did a great job.
Thank you. Appreciate your support.
Ms. Palish?
So, the, I did notice the ebook app. So how quickly do you anticipate that we're gonna be able to transition to that?
So we're gonna transition as our normal textbook purchasing would take place. So as, as we need, say, for example, new Spanish books, we're not gonna buy the books, we're gonna buy the Spanish online version. We'll buy a classroom set, so there's still a book for, for student chooses. So that, I would take, it's gonna take about five years to transition.
And what's the savings with, like, a hard book versus a digital?
Slight, the sort of publishers have caught on, because this is-
Yeah, I was gonna say, I bet they charge just-
A little less, but it's not as significant as you would think.
But the real savings is the not having to lug it around, and not having to pass them out, and-
And having it accessible twenty-four-seven.
Yep.
And all the, all the features that come on the Chromebook, where you can highlight your book now, you can text to speech, speech to text, you can make notes in the book, because you can control it, so it gives a lot of options.
Right, so lots of, so, so we figure about a five-year, just to transition everything.
As we would normally switch out our textbooks, yep.
Great, that's, that was one of the features I'm most excited about. The other thing, I had a question, you talked about loners. So how many loners do we have? Because I would imagine, at least initially, that there might be more need for loners than down the road, but, so how many do we have?
Thirty per school.
Okay.
That's a lot, sounds like a lot.
Yeah, we can't let it interfere with the edu-, it's going to be the tool for education, so we have to be prepared that the student forgets it, or it's not working, whatever.
And did we base that on other schools, how mu-, what kind of need they had, like, for student body numbers?
Exactly, exactly.
Because it sounds like a lot, but it really doesn't.
It's a little higher than probably what's necessary, but it's one of those things where, you know, you wanna be safe rather than-
Because nine through twelve, we have, what, five hundred and something, Chris, at the high school? What do you have? How many students? Five something? So that actually doesn't seem like a lot to me, but, okay. That's all I have, just those two things.
Okay.
Excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Yeah, that wa-, that was great, and this is certainly an important initiative, sorry?
I said I'm all set, Jerry, if you had a-
Okay. My only question was sort of a, kind of mundane one, in a way. So, the, if the device is damaged or lost, and it's under warranty, and the warrant, and the warranty is covering the damage, then it's under warranty, and it's no cost to the
Right.
family. If they don't have insurance, and there's some negligence, or even not just negligence, damage, they're on the hook, correct?
Right, that's what's outlined in the One to One Handbook.
Right. So what would the, so it was twenty dollars per device per year, I assume?
Correct.
Based on the presentation? What would the cost be to the district? It can't be a simple mathematical, you know, a thousand times twenty. But did we look into what would the cost be for insurance for the entire district?
If we were to provide it, you mean?
Yeah.
I don't believe we have, unless Miss Connelly knows something that I don't.
It's exactly what you just said, it is a value, it'd be twelve hundred by year.
So whether we buy it or they buy it, it's twenty?
That is correct, yes. And if we didn't handle the paperwork ourselves, it's actually more expensive. So since the technology department's gonna take on the paperwork, if they are providing the insurance, it'd actually cut the cost down for the families.
Okay. So it'd be approximately twenty-four thousand dollars for the district to get an insurance policy for-
Per year, yes.
Per year? That's a lot of money. Okay. Guess I'll be writing a check for sixty dollars, then. Alright. Those are my only questions.
Do you mind if I ask our, our reps? What, what's the, what's the buzz? What's the feeling from a student perspective having these? You wanna turn on your mic?
Could be ready.
That's okay, just talk loud.
Um, I think that some of the students are confused, maybe on just how much, I did, because I hadn't heard of the whole insurance process until just now, which makes a lot of sense. I think students aren't really aware if, are we supposed to bring it to school every, like, back and forth every day? Is it, are we gonna kind of eliminate, like, just textbooks and notebooks and everything as well? I think it's a good idea, I don't think, most students seem here for it. A lot of them already do have computers, so they kind of have that little bit, like, teenage side of it, that's like, oh, well, we don't need this. But I think that it's an adjustment that they'll learn to make, because they also don't wanna bring their MacBooks to and from school. And I think that once the resources and textbooks convert over, it'll work better. I think it's just a little bit, as a school, I think we're all a little confused on just how exactly it's gonna work. So I think maybe just a little bit of logistics for us, I think, would help the transition.
So if I may, address that.
Yes.
So the presentation that you all saw tonight will be presented to the students before they receive their Chromebooks in January.
Okay.
So it's the final phase of this.
Get those questions ready.
Alright, well, and I'm sure there'll be some degree of a learning curve about the whole thing. Mm-hmm. So. Okay.
Now I have a question.
Yes, Mrs. Pave, absolutely.
So seniors, seniors will have approximately six months using this. At the end of their career here at the high school, do those Chromebooks get recycled to other students coming in?
So, the ones the seniors are going to receive are not gonna be the new ones, they're gonna get an older version, because they're only need it for six months. However, once the cycle starts, and so you receive it in your freshman year,
Right.
we expect it to last those four years. And this will be a conversation we'll have with you, and how you wanna deal with that at the end of four years. A lot of districts then figure out a cost, and are willing to sell it to the families, and you recoup that revenue, and you use it for sustainability plan to purchase a new one. So you're only buying one grade every year, so you're pro-, you're basically buying about a hundred new Chromebooks per year.
Right.
So, but that's, you know, that's four years from now.
Okay. And what do we think the full half-life of the device is, or the full lifetime of the device, not half-life, that's medicine?
The average life on a Chromebook is a minimum of about five years.
Okay.
Especially because of the, that hard drive power, we were talking about that earlier.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact that, they're, they're not very big. So, I don't know if you remember back, the E-machine that came back, came out in the late nineties, early two thousands? It's something similar like that, that's kind of what the device is, where it's got a small hard drive, everything's stored in the cloud. The batteries are actually really, really small, and fit out the entire bottom of the device. So the batteries do last a little bit longer, they are stronger than the typical cellphone-type battery. But you're gonna get at least five years of good out of these devices. Eight years is kind of pushing it, so.
Okay.
I would say the average life's about that five years.
You're not supposed to have a cellphone for five years?
Yeah.
Mine's over.
Okay.
Could I, um, could I ask one question? What if, um, oh, I lost it. I will email you, because I forgot.
What if something happens?
Well, the what if, okay, thank you. What happens if you have students who are not too faithful about charging?
So we do, we are gonna have charging stations in all classrooms.
How many?
So that they would be able to plug the device in while they're in the classroom.
Are we talking one cord?
No, there will be, so there's a little tower, I know that you, you guys have seen the towers in different conference rooms.
Okay.
So there'll be a tower in every single classroom, and we do have five hundred chargers that will be distributed throughout both the buildings, so that there will be charging stations enough for the kids if they charge.
How long does it take to charge one of these?
About four hours for dead to fully charged.
So I guess as they go class to class, they'll be charging as they go?
Something they'll have to-
And, and worst-case scenario, if they-
Be disciplined to do that.
-completely, completely dead, they can go to the library and get a loner for the dead, and let their device stay here. Because the benefit of the Chromebook, as you can see, when, with the device that's in front of you, that might not be the device that you use at the next meeting, but all of your information is on it, because everything is in the cloud.
In cloud.
Doesn't matter which device that they're using, even if the kiddos go home and they use their MacBook or something, everything is in the Google Cloud or in that Office 365 One grab, so you're not pinned to one specific device if needed.
Very exciting.
Yeah? Okay. Alright, anybody else? Any other questions? Okay, we are up to item twelve C, the high school handbook, which we've continued a couple times. And Mr. Ashley, I don't know if you had any prefatory or suffocatory marks to make?
Yes, thank you. So, as a continuation, as you spoke to from a previous meeting, we went back and, based off of your feedback, added in language for about the field trip policy and medication. And so we included language directly from that policy into the handbook
Okay.
to make it really clear. We also included additional clarification language around vaping. Again, off of the feedback. There was already some language in there around vaping, but we wanted to make it really crystal clear about the dangers, the prohibition on school, campus, and school-related activities, and what we have in practice for that. And then just the third piece was, we added a component for our work-study program. So this is the opportunity for students who are still attending classes, but if they have an employer that can partner with us, can, through a contract that you have in your packet, have a working relationship where they're leaving school a little bit early, before the end of the official school day, working with that employer. And then there's a partnership between us and that employer, for the student to gain the work experience, but also practice the skills that we've been, we've been teaching them here at school, and then work in their real-life work experience, and then earn credit for that work.
Okay. Just, before we go into discussion, I'm just gonna ask for a pro-, a motion to approve in a second, so that we can then open the discussion.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Okay. Yes, Mrs. Black?
So, the work-study one, I was very excited about. But one of the components said, which I'm sure everybody's gonna go, of course you have to do that, is to pass every course, because what if somebody has a work-study program, and they're having a really tough time with a class, you know, and doing well and everything else, and that can happen. I've seen it happen to kids, and, and I, I don't know about-
What page are you looking at, Sally?
Oh gee, I don't know what page it is, it's, it's just on the provisions for the work-study. But it just says they have to pass every class to be part of it. So all I'm saying is, if there was, um, anything about a discussion or a meeting, a team meeting or something, you know?
There, yeah, it's, it's a good point, actually. And to your point about if a student we, we see start to struggle academically, and actually what we, what we believe is that the students actually, this is a motivator, this opportunity to have-
Right, that's what I think, yeah.
-the coursework with the work combination and earn the credit is, they're now really engaged, and they have a reason to do both.
Exactly.
But that if there's a life situation, family situation that occurs that makes added stress difficult, we don't just cut them off.
So you'll, you know, of course you'll look into it and everything, yeah.
Absolutely. It's a meeting with the parent, we bring the counselors involved, and that's where we partner with the employer. So we might, if, for a period of time, do a reduced work schedule after school, so that the emphasis is back on school to say-
Right, that kind of, that's what I mean, kind of work it out, because it's a beautiful cooperation.
Exactly.
And it can keep some kids through, and so they'll graduate, which is very exciting.
But it's still pass/fail. The grading.
The work-study.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Other questions, Mrs. Pave?
I have no questions. However, are these pages gonna be numbered at the final?
Yes.
I, yes?
You thinking the same thing?
Yes?
Yes.
Looking for page twenty-two, and I'm counting sixteen.
It comes up if you have it on, you can get you-
Yeah, it comes up when you scroll.
But the, the actual document is not paged.
We, yes.
But when you scroll, you can see it.
But, your table of contents refers one to a page, but the-
Exactly. Let's paginate it.
So, Mr. Ashley, this work-study course, is this considered an elective?
Yes, in that it's not a standard component of our curriculum, in terms of, you know, four years of math or English. And so the student puts a request in, or the family, with guidance, and then we work it out from there.
So I'm seeing four terms, ten credits. This does not replace any core academics?
No, so our graduation requirements, like I was alluding to,
That's exactly where I'm getting to.
Senior project, community service, that is staying.
Okay.
That does not change at all.
So they still have to get the credits and-
Sciences, the social studies.
Okay.
All that does not change at all.
Okay.
This is an elective, or an addition to.
Okay.
Ms. Palish? You looking at all your page numbers?
No. No, I'm, I'm good, thanks.
Ms. Black, any other questions?
No, thank you, thank you very much.
Ms. Pave?
No, thank you.
Ms. Farner?
I do like the rearrangement, Chris. Like the, that you, how you moved stuff, it seems like it flows better.
Yeah, that was, that was really the goal, more, more reader-friendly.
Oh, go ahead.
No, 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 no.
No, that one's yours.
So I have a couple questions. So one is the National Honor Society, which is on page sixteen here, but I don't know what page it would wind up for you. So, and I've actually had a couple different versions of the handbook, so I'll have to- So, and I actually had a couple of different versions of the handbook, so I'll have to, so it is, it says, so you are now keeping with the 3.5 GPA?
Correct.
Or am I on the wrong version?
No, nope, that's correct.
Keeping with 3.5.
That's correct.
And keeping with, it has to, it's only in your senior year?
We did
We just inducted like 35 juniors or something like that?
Correct, we did, we did open it up to juniors. In, you know, in addition to seniors. And I'm looking here, so we, we would need to include that piece in there about the juniors, that should have been included.
Yeah, I was going to say, I would be that explicit.
Yeah, because it's, yeah, you definitely need to make it explicit.
Yeah, so I, with the committee's permission, I would request that we can add that if you
Because that was a major shift for us.
So, and this could perhaps be a different, an agenda item at a different meeting, but the, the qualifications are a bit vague and maybe you didn't want to get into too many details in the handbook, but that would, a handbook would be someplace I think you would want to get into very specific details about exactly what the selection process is. And I don't know if you want to either tell us, I'm, I'm, I'm interested to hear what the, the selection process is, period. But I would think that it would need to be in the handbook as well, that it's going to be a jury of your peers, or your little brother who's going to decide, or the faculty votes, and, and whether or not, I think that the process has to be transparent. That's the real bottom line. So I don't know if you could, can you gloss it for us exactly what the process is right now and then sort of maybe add some text there?
Sure, yeah, so you alluded to the process, and so we, just, you know, we follow the guidelines based off of the national standards for National Honor Society, you know, across high schools, across the country. And so it is a process for first, just review of basic eligibility in terms of that academic GPA requirement. Uh, and then it's a faculty committee. So administration, per the guidelines, is not involved in that decision-making process. And then it's a review of the applications from each of the students. So, once they're found eligible, we notify the students and the families, there's an application. They submit that, there's some writing component, questions about each of the criteria, the character, citizenship, service, and leadership. And then the faculty committee reviews that to make that decision.
Okay, so it's a committee of the faculty?
It's a committee of the faculty.
Okay.
Yeah, this says the entire faculty, along with the special committee, judges each student. So is it?
Yeah, so it is a faculty committee that makes the, that decision.
Where this says the entire faculty, I guess to Jerry's point, we need to, this language probably needs to be cleaned up. Because right now it just says the entire faculty judges.
Yeah.
Along with
So we can go back at a future meeting and adds, you know, make that a separate item for you or
I think it would, I think it would be useful to do that.
We can do that.
Yeah, and then as you decide to amend the handbook, you can, because I, I think again, it has to be objective, transparent, and available to everyone.
Agreed.
But we're going to make the change that says, at, at this, at least change it to say seniors and juniors who have maintained. Because right now it just says seniors.
Correct.
And, and the question that comes quickly to mind is if a junior is inducted and their GPA falls below 3.5.
Exactly, that was my question too.
What is the consequence, if any?
So, they, they would reapply. Well, they would, they would become ineligible potentially for a senior year.
They get thrown out?
So there would be, there is that potential, so that's where the faculty committee would come together.
So it really should say seniors and juniors who maintain a 3.5 cumulative GPA? Because it can't be who have maintained, it has to be who maintains.
So wait, so if you have a 3.5, and, and again, this probably is a reasonable thing to have as a separate agenda item. So if you get in as a 3.5, you know, 3.5 at the end of your sophomore year, get into the National Honor Society, do you get drummed out if you drop below 3.5?
It would not happen immediately. It's not like, you know, after the second quarter or something, it's automatic. So it'd be at the, the start of the following year.
Well, I think that process has to be spelled out too.
Yeah, so we, we can, we can include that.
Well, see, that's my issue, is I don't want to prove a handbook that the lang, we're not clear with the language right now. Because, I mean, this language is not okay. So, I mean, if we have an issue with that language, and, and you want to be
We can continue it, I, you know
Yeah, if you want to be more prescriptive in what it says, we either have to make it very general and then have it later, or we have to have it come back to us. Because right now, it's not okay, and we don't know what it's going to say, and I don't want to approve a handbook that way.
Could it be, can I make, it's a recommendation that we temporarily remove the National Honor Society component until a future meeting to add back in or?
Yeah, uh, I guess the question is how do we handle that administratively? Because, um, you know, to I think all our points, if you're going to have a school student handbook, the student handbook should at least aspire to some sort of comprehensiveness without being encyclopedic. So
And I'm okay with this being more general, but, um, it's not now.
But then again, where's, so then you're going to say, well, it's not in the handbook, where is it? And the parent or the student's going to be wondering, do I look in the policy manual of the school district? Do I look, I don't know, where do you look other than in the handbook?
No, I agree.
If I may add,
Yeah.
I, I think it's important to have the handbook approved and in place.
Right.
And National Honor Society is, the induction's already happened, so you're not really time-bound by this. So to Mr. Ashley's expectation, I mean, you could just approve it without any language, and we can bring it back to you in the January
Yeah.
tent meeting and have it then. It's not going to really impact everyone, but the rest of the handbook does.
Are we going to post this?
Post.
The handbook, once we approve it tonight?
Right.
Uh, you know, I, I would also
So could we, could we strike the language?
That's what we're suggesting, devoid of
Well, leave National Honor Society and then just say, you know, language to be determined at a future meeting.
Perfect.
I, I think that, yeah, I think the issues have to be resolved.
And then we can just update it because we're digital.
We are.
Yes. All right.
We can do that.
Does every, can everybody live with that? Because that way you don't have something in there that's wrong.
So you need to amend the motion then.
If I could also add, we're already almost halfway through the school year. We haven't updated it yet, I don't know what waiting another month will do us.
I'm okay either way.
Okay. Do you want to make an, a motion to amend the original motion to exclude the National Honor Society language?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Is, uh, any discussion on the amendment to the motion? All those in favor? Okay, so we now have an amended motion. That was one of my questions. I guess more to the, to the same sort of issue as class rank. And I would advise, and I'm okay with the language as it is in the handbook, but I would advise that you specify again how different classes are weighted. So there was this thing about, you know, students can
Where's that, Jerry?
It's
That's okay.
You want a page, right?
I'll find it.
Look in the table of contents.
That'll be helpful. I'll find it.
So, uh, anyway, um, it was, you know, if you take a, one level of class, if you take an honors class, if you take an AP class, and, and then how the grades are converted to the four-point system.
Spell that out more clearly.
Isn't that in here?
Yeah, I don't think it, no, sort of, the math or the formula isn't.
Oh.
So, my son could, with some shame, tell me what his GPA was, and I couldn't tell you how the grades, which were also not acceptable, were translated into that GPA. Sorry, Max.
So like an honors class is four-point, whatever?
I don't know.
Isn't that already in here?
No.
No.
Oh, I thought it was.
It never has been.
So if you take, so if you take general biology and you get an A, it counts as something towards the four-point or five-point GPA?
It's somewhere, where is it? I know it's somewhere.
It's somewhere because it, well, unless it was removed somewhere.
No, there's discussion
We, we haven't had any recent conversations about
I know it's not in the handbook, but I thought it was online somewhere, like in the guidance.
Program of Studies, maybe?
Uh, I don't, I'd have to go back and check. I know in the Program of Studies, there's a description around how the courses are weighted differently.
Program of Studies, because I know it's online somewhere.
But I, I guess I'd say, you know, to your point, we, um, we could at the very least work to include. If we have to come back for the National Honor Society, I could come back with language also about
In Janu, in January.
Again, I guess, you know, I, I might add comprehensive to objective, transparent, and accessible. And that's what we're trying to do with
Of course.
writing a handbook is to sort of make all those things happen, or all those adjectives apply to, to different things. I apologize for having actually read the handbook and now having questions. So, my next question is about social media. And there is, while there are some, a couple typos in the cyberbullying thing, my, I have two questions. One is, if, I think we have policy that governs the use of electronic handheld devices, but that's policy, it's not anywhere in the handbook. I don't think any parent or student is likely to look, although it's there and nice and, and beautiful on the website. I think you have to include in the handbook exactly how phones are governed within the school.
Can we refer to the other, have a reference to, or you don't want people to have to go look?
Again, I think, I think you have to, if you're going to call it a handbook, and I think we should have a handbook, and we should call it the handbook, you probably have to have sort of the common questions and the sort of plain language answers that people can say, oh yeah, this is what's in the handbook, this is how I you, you know, if we're going to ask people to actually read this thing.
And let's be honest, we're really doing this for parents because you guys aren't reading this, are you? Nope, yep.
I was thinking that when you were saying that.
Yep.
No, but you're also, this is a
Nope.
Well, it's not just to inform, but it's also to hold accountable as well, both parents and students.
And it's signed.
And we're, yeah, we're expecting people, you know, the expectation is that they read it, whether they do or not, it's not riveting.
But we have a lot of stuff that's not in the handbook, so where's, what's the cutoff?
I think, well, I think the things that are likely to become issues to judge behavior and conduct within the school, phone, phone seems to me like, yeah, that should be in there. And, and my last question is sort of towards the same issue. Again, there's a, a nice paragraph about cyberbullying. Cyberbullying can happen in the school, but how do you know that it happened in the school? How do you know it happened outside the school, and where are the boundaries?
Yeah, um, I guess to speak to your latter point first around the cyberbullying, and that language is, is in there to provide what you're talking about, some sense of objective, transparent means in terms of how we determine whether or not that's going on. To answer your specific questions about the boundaries between school and home, that's where we do an investigation. And sometimes it's a clear-cut case where it, we have a timestamp or it's happening during school. And other times it blurs the boundaries. And the key question we're asking us is the impact on the educational environment and the potential impact that it's having on the student or students during class time.
So what behavior is proper subject for the school districts? What behavior outside of school is, does the school have a proper interest in?
Yeah, I think our interest lies again in the educational environment, meaning in the classroom, in school, or school-related activity, and how that could impact students' ability to learn and focus.
If I may jump in on this a little bit, I have a little knowledge here on it. The courts and the ACLU have to find this for us.
Okay.
And, uh, anything that happens outside electronically, digitally, cyberbullying outside of the school day that we can confirm happens outside of there, the only response we can make is if it's having an impact on the operations of the school day. So a bunch of kids come in, they're talking about it, it's stopping teachers from teaching and things like that, we can discipline then. And that's the only time. So we have to be able to make that nexus that has interrupted, um, the educational operations of our school. And it's, it's been codified in court case after case after case, and it's the briefings we get now as administrators are followed by. So it is still a little gray, I guess is what I'm saying to you.
Right.
We got to show some nexus. You know, just if one kid comes in and they're, they're hurt by something that was posted online and the rest of the school doesn't know anything about it, then, you know, we can make parents aware, we make those phone calls, we can try to get the police involved, but our, our involvement ends there.
So leaving aside cyberbullying, what about if it's physical violence or involvement in a gang? If that occurs exclusively outside the walls of the school, the school has no interest or standing?
It depends if it raises to the assault of a felony or an assault, and then we have the right to take action.
And an obligation to make sure law enforcement is involved as well, I would assume.
Something like that, that's where we'd be contacting the police.
Yeah.
So how do you define that?
The courts define it for us, a lot of fines are for us. I mean, a felony and an assault is defined by law.
No, how do you, how do you define when the cyberbullying has come within the walls of the school?
Happened into the walls of school or happened outside and came into the walls?
Well, that's what I'm getting at, there are no walls.
Well, we, we can timestamp, we can identify if something happened during the school day. And that's what our filters will tell us.
What if the student wasn't in school?
It was absent that day?
But was texting his classmate? So it applies from seven to two?
So, right, but that student's absent that day. And so now you've got that gray area.
But they're texting, they're bullying a student who's in school.
Right. So that, that would cause an investigation. You're giving me a scenario that, you know, would probably have to be defined in the moment.
Well, I'm, I'm actually suggesting that there are no walls, so there is no limit, in a way.
Mm-hmm.
If, if there are interactions between students, the school has standing. Not because I want it that way.
Right.
Uh, or because it, uh, doesn't create a gigantic problem. I'm just saying that that's the reality that we're living in.
Mm-hmm.
Dr. Larkin?
Yes, Mrs. Black?
So, um, we were one of the first school districts in 2008 to address this because that's what was happening. They say, we didn't do that in school. It caused a lot of problems because of what they did in the whole school and the whole environment, but they say, and the parents would say, oh no, they, they weren't in school, you have no jurisdiction over that. So that's why we, we put it in, and then the courts came in, and they, as he said, the ACLU. And then it's, it is a gray area, but we have to have it there to protect what can happen. You know, we, we started talking about that in 2008, this whole cyber thing.
Have what there?
It in our, in our handbooks and in our, you know, our, our rules about cyberbullying. You know, it wasn't, we always had bullying, but then we added that other component. And just for the discussion of it, because a lot of things can happen outside that can cause a lot of problems in the school. Not just to one
That's what I'm getting at, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
But then bullying raises, you know, there's a whole separate definition of cyberbullying too. And there's a difference between harassment and bullying.
Yeah.
Bullying is repetitive and, you know, wears down a student's resources and things of that nature. So if we can define it as bullying taking place in the school, then we can react to it. And then if it's just a one-off, that's harassment. And so we still can take actions if that happens during the school day. But if it's outside of school hours, then we've got to be able to, you know, make some nexus to ourselves.
How about if somebody is, uh, bullying someone outside of class, but then it is generalized to the school community within the school day?
And the school reacts to it, and there's some kind of commotion as a result of that?
The commotion is electronic.
And I guess what I'm, what the courts are telling us is we have to balance First Amendment rights that all students they don't shed those constitutional rights when they walk inside our door here. And the lawyers, you know, are defending these rights vigorously. So we have to be able to prove that that type of action is causing a disruption to our learning environment for us to take any action. Now, it doesn't prevent us from calling parents and asking parents to get involved, or calling the police and seeing if there's a violation there, which we take all those actions. It's just we have to be able to be sure we can take a disciplinary action without violating the law. And, you know, I don't think I can define it crystal clear for you this evening because it's not crystal clear. I could share with you all the cases that have happened that we read, and, and as you read each one, you're going to be amazed that that student wasn't disciplined. It's, I don't know how else to describe it.
And it, it does just get back to the, I think, the presentation tonight, that our core mission is to educate and teach our students around, you know, proper use, responsible use of technology. Doesn't mean that these incidents don't occur, that's not what I'm saying, is that that's why we make this such a priority, really, across the board. It's really an ongoing effort that for all teachers, that we recognize technology is in the hands of our kids pretty much all day long, every day. And so we need to work together to make sure they're using it responsibly.
So all of these things in the handbook where we talk about harassment and, and, you know, just all the other things, what you're saying is, um, it really has, it, the courts are defining it and limiting it to where we
Have jurisdiction.
Okay. Because we do have all those things, but what you're saying Because we do have all those things, but what you're saying is our ability to enforce them is limited to where we can prove jurisdiction.
Right, and so there's been, let me define for you one case, so there was, you know, a lot of these things happen with videos and pictures, so there's a picture of a student, and you can imagine it was an inappropriate picture, and it's passed around, every kid's getting it on their phone, every kid's talking about it in class, and all of a sudden it becomes a commotion, right?
Right.
Now we can discipline. Now we can go, it doesn't matter when that happened, it could happen at midnight, one or two in the morning, because it caused a commotion during our day, we have the right to react. And see, and so that's great, right? I mean, what is a commotion? How do we define that? We've gotta work our way through that.
So that's, I guess that's kinda hard to write in this one period.
Yeah, the courts can't write it, so I'm not sure we're gonna be able to.
Right, right.
I think it's an ongoing, continuing issue. It's huge.
Well, I guess my point is, you know, I'll go back to that, there are no walls. How do you know when something happened? How do you know what the even context of the relationship was? It may be exclusively within the schools. And when we did not have, you know, all the miracles of modern medicine, no, modern electronic communication, it was very easy to say, you're on school property, you're not on school property.
It was, it was easy, it's not easy anymore.
You know, if you stick your tongue out at somebody, you know, at grays, school has no standing.
Right.
But there is no, I think it's problematic.
It is?
It is, and it just, it causes us to be diligent investigators.
Well, and, and I guess my point is, given that there are, there is no way for the district to assert its rights to protect students for whom you have care in custody when it's occurring, you know, in the ether.
I, I think it's dependent on the circumstances, Lisa, that's how I've learned it. But again, it doesn't prevent us from calling parents, and it doesn't prevent us from getting the police involved, who may have a greater jurisdiction than we do, and I think those are the appropriate steps we have to take at times.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
I have a new question, I'll give you.
Good, I thought you would.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Mr. Ashley, this speaks to page forty, and it's, it's kind of along the same lines, and it really just kind of came out to me as I was reading this, cellphone and electronic devices is discussed.
Okay, I can find it, what page is it?
Page forty.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What page forty?
Specifically that cellphones at the high school level, electronic devices included but not limited to cellphones, speakers, radios, and on. No electronic devices of any kind will be allowed to interrupt the learning process in the classroom. Perfect. Electronic devices may be used, only be used in the classroom with permission of the classroom instructor. Perfect. And I don't know if anyone feels otherwise here, but that's, I personally agree with that as the policy. The, the question I have, and you, you have consequences of violating the policy, and I assume that's in the case that a student is becoming too attached to the phone and not attached to the teacher, I, I understand that.
Landmark.
Uh-huh. The, second to the last paragraph, the use of cellphones to make personal calls is strictly prohibited in the classroom, hallway, cafeteria, lab, or senior lounge. I, I really don't know how you'd ever enforce this. And it's not calls, it's texts.
Or pictures and videos.
And, and then you also say that use of cellphones to take pictures and videos is prohibited. I don't know how you would ever enforce that either, I mean, kids walk around doing it all the time. I, I don't know what value it really has in this policy, if we all know, you really can't enforce students from making phone calls, from sending texts to their parents or each other. Is this really a statement that applies to today's student? Is my question.
Yeah, I guess, I would say it does, and I do hear you on the enforcement, it is absolutely a challenge. But I would actually say that we, we do enforce it, in that, in general, our students are, especially in the classroom, generally respectful of that space, in that our teachers are clear on their policies, this policy, they might be using the Chromebook, but they're not, they're really not on their cellphones much, and they are focused on the classroom. Now, in the more public spaces or open spaces or hallways and stuff, you're right, it's difficult, it's difficult, it's, I don't think that's justification to not include it, though, I guess.
My worry would be by not having it, now you can't ever enforce it.
Right, right.
Versus, right.
In a hallway between classes, if they wanna shoot someone a text? How is that addressed?
Yeah, I guess, you know, if, if we notice or something, it's important, we might have a quick conversation with the student, you know, as a warning, but, you know, as this speaks to it, if it becomes repeated, or the students, you're not able to stay focused, then, then we could follow the protocol, is that right, Chris?
And the use of phones to take pictures and videos is prohibited, is, this is 100% of the time?
Again, I'd say.
It's in our acceptable use policy also.
Yeah, it's in, yeah, so.
On here, it's very clear, the use of cellphones to take pictures and videos is prohibited.
Correct.
So that means there should not be pictures of anything within the walls of this school taken by a student.
Not during the day.
Correct.
Mm-hmm.
Correct. And so again, when we do find out.
We may wanna take a look at that, match that language up to our policy, I think it says that, in our policy, it says, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Conabali, that without the express consent of.
Right, see, I could see that.
Because we do let, you know, there's academic advantages of taking pictures, there are social events, we let kids take pictures.
Exactly. I'm trying to point these things out, just so.
So we just gotta correlate that to the policy.
Perhaps a little tweaking.
So match that language with your electronic policy.
Acceptable use policy.
And perhaps instead of phone calls, using the cellphones to communicate?
So I think we have enough things now that I'd like to see this come back, because we have the National Honor Society, we have the class ranking grade assignments, and now we have the cellphone.
Yep.
Acceptable use language matching, I think we have enough stuff now that I think we're gonna have to have this come back.
We'll see in January, we'll be well-prepared in January.
And not to cut anybody else off, I'm just making that point.
No, we want.
So if anybody else, if you have anything else, bring it up now.
Well, if we're gonna take the time, let's, let's all do this well and collaboratively.
Right. I just wanna speak on behalf of our student representatives, I don't know if you have further questions, but it is just getting late in the night, so I might just, if, if you're welcome to stay.
They were just starting to enjoy it.
Homework, all right?
No, that's fine. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the floor. Are there any other points of the handbook that we wanna discuss and/or ask for revisions? I don't know who made the original motion, I think it was Mrs. Black.
We're gonna continue it now?
If you could just read, withdraw the motion, I think we can then continue it.
Okay.
You withdraw the motion?
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, so we're gonna continue High School Handbook until January's meeting.
Thank you, Chris.
Yes, thank you.
This is probably painful, but.
And I encourage the committee, if there's anything else, then you identify between now and then, just email Chris or myself, and we'll.
Then you'll have it.
Can, I, I have a question toward that. Can we get a sort of clean version rather than sort of specifying where things were moved and crossed out and then paginated?
Sure, it's a little more easier to read, I keep going to me, like remove the crossed-out sections if you're comfortable.
Except all changes, and just let us see like the final version.
We'll always have this.
Correct, right.
We'll always have this.
Yeah, that's a good suggestion, Jerry.
Chew over like a bone, and with page numbers.
Right, page numbers.
Thank you. Are we good?
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Ashley, you're up again. Twelve D, proposed new work-study contract?
Yeah, that was, the work-study, that was actually, I built that into my, my previous comments.
Okay. All right. Item twelve E, FY budget, Ms. Roderick.
Can I just, can we go back to that?
Yep.
So, is this more for just the employer information than, I mean, we have other extracurriculars that we don't have everyone sign, I mean, like if you do, you know, you go over to BCC or, you know, we don't have, so, so what's the point of the contract, just?
The.
I mean, if it's an extracurri, I mean, it's not an extracurricular, that's not the right word, if it's a elective.
It's successful to the employer.
Is it more for the employer information, is, like, what?
It's, it's to show the partnership, that's, it is, so it's not, that's your point, it's not an extracurricular, this is actually a course.
Right, okay.
And so that's the key piece, is the student's getting credit, so.
And because it's off-campus, which is, which is very different from.
Correct.
Okay. All right, thank you, that was it.
Yep.
No, it's in the handbook. The contract is in the handbook.
It is.
There's a thing about it in the handbook.
It is a separate document in our.
It is, yeah, there's another one.
Right.
Are you looking for us to approve this?
If you write it to, I know Mr. Ashley's gonna put it in place for certain students, so if you want, we can bring it back.
Yeah, I'll, I'll make a motion that we approve the work-study contract.
And second?
All right, is there any other discussion?
Thank you for that, Dr. Ashley.
Okay, all those on paper? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
That was quick, huh?
Good.
Painless?
Need to go, Chris.
All right, take it as a win. All right. Twelve E, FY twenty budget, Ms. Roderick.
Okay, I won't take up too much of your time, so I presented here sort of what I'm hoping will eventually be sort of a standing report that I can provide to not only the finance committee, but also the school committee, which identifies all of our sources of revenue as well as our, our expenditure budget, and where we are budget to actual as of a given date. There are a handful of small revisions based on conversations with Ms. Hornworth and Ms. Palish that we're gonna make, but eventually we'll have sort of year-to-year comparison with explanations of fluxes and so forth, but I can tell you that I, in my short time here, I have been able to get a handle on the budget and our funding, and sort of where all our sources are from, and where our expenditures are, and I can say that we're on track to be on budget. There are, there might be some tightening of the purse strings, once I get down to the line item level, I am gonna be, soon, I don't have an exact date yet, but I will be sending out budget reports to all the principals and so forth, just so that, you know, one of the things that I heard was that, you know, that they didn't get a lot of information on how to manage that, so that I can work with them, and hopefully, if there's a negative in one line, they'll take it from another line, we'll make the adjustments so that we do come in on budget. And, and then the second page that you have is our fund balance information, we're still waiting on the audit report from the town, there are still, I guess, an item or two that the auditors are reconciling, but our best estimate as of June 30, 2019 is 1.35 million, and then from that, there are some committed items and some items that were approved by the school committee to take out of fund balance, and as of the end of November, so there's approximately, we're estimating $457,000 left in fund balance that we're anticipating. Hopefully, nothing bad will go wrong between now and the end of the year where we have to dip into that. Although, again, based on our meetings with the finance committee, there's a couple of adjustments that we'll probably be making as well, but I think, I think we're starting to get on the same page, and that the communication will approve as my time here goes on.
That's good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy.
I, just one, one quick point, and I know, we can, I know we'll probably talk about it at the end, because we need to have a FY twenty-one budget discussion, I just wanna point out, four fifty-six, seven, seven, one, on a $33.6 million budget is shockingly low.
It's one and a half percent.
Yeah, it's, 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 it is what it is, but I just wanted to point that out, that, I mean, three percent, five percent, usually, is that what you've seen, Amy, is a real, is a more comfortable number, that one and a half on a thirty-three point six?
Well, certainly more is always better.
Yeah.
Certainly.
I, I know, I know as a committee, we've always looked from, certainly wanted to keep that three to five, I know, you know, we had some unexpected costs, special needs costs that, that drove having to dip into that, but certainly going forward, something we have to be very aware of, that that's a, that's a really, and I'm sure Dr. Sankeyoni agrees, that's a low.
Low.
It literally has become that rainy day contingency, last chance fund at this point.
Thank you, Amy.
Just two quick questions. One is, I thought that the literacy program was in our budget as approved by the voters? Am I, am I misremembering?
No.
Probably ask that question every time this comes in, I guess.
No.
And then, the five eighteen was some special ed overages, as well as a deficit that got carried, or a structural deficit that got carried over from the prior fiscal year, I'm asking Peter this more than Amy, I think.
The answer is.
Yeah, that's.
Oh, no, that's the.
That's from fund balance.
That's the balance?
That's to balance operations.
This year's, remember how you appropriated from both Medicaid and the fund balance, to balance this year's budget, so that's what that is.
The five eighteen?
Yeah, so in order to balance FY twenty, we could not cover our operations and needed to.
Okay.
Assign an amount from both here and from our special ed.
That's right, all right, yep, 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 okay.
I'd love if we didn't have to use it, but, as Amy said, we're on target, so we probably are on target to use it.
And I, I also am determined to be the queen of no if we don't have the money, so hopefully, hopefully.
Might come in handy.
Well, just in terms of, you know, just knowing how important the budget is, it's our A number one priority, non-academic priority, and I wanna make sure that we don't go in the red at all.
No, that's good, thank you.
So if you hear nasty grams about me, I'm sure they're true.
Okay, thank you, and welcome again.
Thank you.
Item thirteen F, update on training for secretaries and clerks, Ms. Donley-Roch.
Thank you, just briefly, I'll be very brief, I wanted to give you an update, in this early fall, we did an online survey of all of our office staff, both in central office and each of the schools, and then just December third, Ms. Broshu and I conducted a needs assessment face-to-face with each of them, we've been there workday, so we've developed a schedule, seven or eight sessions this year, that will become routine, ongoing training. The folks who do that work are frontline, and deal with all sorts of worried, anxious parents, and sorry, teachers, and very hard-working principals with lots of competing priorities, so they deserve high-quality training in order to do their job well, and make sure that they're up to speed with things that work, you say, such as Google and other tools. So it was pretty positive training, training for children, helping to do that, they will be receiving ninety minutes of training for about eight sessions this, during the rest of this school year, and we'll take that so that there's always office coverage, but that'll focus on using our student information system better, making sure we're honoring confidentiality, making sure that there are shared calendars and shared documents to support instruction, and honoring family and educational rights to privacy. That'll be the focus this year, we're also in the spring, we're having some support for them as we transition to new online tools for things like requisitions and registration, so we'll make sure that they are up to speed and able to answer the questions of all the people who, who come to them.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Donley-Roch? Okay. Twelve G, 2020, 2021 school calendar. Starting awfully early, Dr. Sankeyoni.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Chairman, and I wanna bring this to you as your first look, I'm gonna ask you to approve this at our January meeting, and I just wanna point out some of the intricacies of the proposal I have in front of you. It pretty much mirrors this year, but one of the things you'll notice right away is that we have the teachers coming back on the 26th, and we have schools starting on the 31st. And I have two reasons for that rationale to start early. The first is less secondary than the second one, is that we, we've looked at the population of our students, and we have over, about 68% of our students are back because of fall athletics, and that's just the high school, and as I, I suspect at the middle school And I say, I suspect that the middle school and the elementary level with all the youth sports, and that includes band and other things, that our students are back. And the second reason, and this is the more important reason, um, if you look at the calendar, we already know next year where the A P exams land and where the S A T tests take place. And every time we can front-load a schedule and give our teachers five extra days of instruction before those tests, we're making a huge diss, and you act, talk to any A P teacher, and the number one concern is, I don't have enough time. And so I know there's differing opinions about when we start, and some people like to go later, I mean, Labor Day is very late, we have to go before Labor Day. But that's the rationale for me, you know, bringing our students in on the thirty-first and getting that solid week in, uh, right away. I think our students are back, and I think it's academically advantageous. The rest of the schedule pretty much mirrors what we've done. We've got the seven early release days mapped in there, we got the teacher-parent conferences, we've got a truncated week off in February, we've got the full week off in April, and currently, we would end on, uh, June eleventh. So again, this is your first look, I'd ask for your approval on this on, uh, at our next meeting in January.
Okay, I have one comment, and it's a really picky-hewn one, but in August, you have the twenty-fourth and the twenty-fifth as numbers, and traditionally, we always have those as X's.
X's, sure.
School is, 'cause, tell you the truth, I looked at this and I said. School is starting on the twenty-fourth? I mean, nobody is happier to get the kids back in school than I am. But.
We'll take those two dates out.
Twenty-fourth seemed awfully early, and then I had to actually look at the teachers' professional days, and now I know that I have them all for another week. Could we start sometime in July? Have a July session? That'd be nice.
Well, in southern parts of our country.
I know, I, in the Midwest.
We're actually late.
Yeah, no, in the Midwest, they start like in the middle of August.
Man, we have an extra break in there, too, other people don't get it.
Any other questions? So we'll take this up in January for approval?
For approval, correct.
All right. Item number twelve H, uh, request approval for middle school gymnasium mats donation.
So the, uh, Tiverton Junior Ba-, Basketball League has been very generous with us. You have a picture up behind, uh, our principal's over there showing the new mats that have been installed at the middle school, uh, so we wanna thank that league and especially Mr. Joe Perry for her generosity to our schools, so, uh, I'd love your approval to, uh, express with them a gratitude for this donation.
Can I have that motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we ex-, that we accept with gratitude the donation of gym mats from the Tiverton Junior Basketball League to the Tiverton Middle School.
Second.
Second out.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, and yes, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Junior Basketball League.
I saw them today, and we certainly needed them. A basketball game, woo!
Okay. Item twelve I, twenty-twenty school committee meeting calendar.
Yes, so you have a calendar, I, and, um, Ms. Farmworth pointed out to me that we need to complete our, the first part of the twenty school year, and I just think it's a, it's appropriate to be able to articulate our meetings for our school year, so that our constituents know, you know, that you're not picking dates at the end of a calendar year for January, February, March, where, you know, you have administrators who are trying to plan days to be at school committee meetings. That I just think it's, it's in better, it's everyone's best interest that we know the school committee dates during the school year. So if you wanna truncate this, uh, certainly they're your meetings, but that was the purpose of providing this.
Providing what, July?
Providing, uh, July all the way to June of twenty-twenty-one.
Are you gonna make a motion?
I'm just looking at them.
To accept it.
Can I have a motion to accept?
Motion to accept.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Um, whereas this is a state law requirement that each public body, uh, display a calendar, um, of upcoming meetings for the following year before the beginning of the calendar year. I would like to recommend that we switch back to calendar year presentation on this document and that we state clearly, as it does already, that the school committee meetings are generally scheduled for the second and fourth Tuesday of each month, with the exception of June, July, and December. Um, and, and actually, I asked that we strike the last part of that sentence where it says from January nineteen to December of twenty-twenty. And that all meetings are held in this library at seven P M., um, unless, and that they are subject to change.
So state law says it has to be the calendar year and not, it does, can't be the fiscal year?
State law says that you have to display the schedule before the beginning of the calendar year. It does not specify what you display. But I really just think that every other public body in this town, and I, in the research I've done in other towns, that, all of them that I've seen have been all calendar.
Although I do like that this matches our.
Yeah.
Our, our school, our calendar.
I think we need to remember that we're the public body.
Well, right, but I like that.
We're not, we're not employees.
Right, but the public school calendar that we're giving our parents.
Which applies to the students.
And our students, then our school committee calendar matches that.
And we go year-round.
Right.
We don't skip the summer.
Right, and this has the summer meeting. I guess I don't have an issue with it, is what I'm saying.
If the committee wishes to continue as is, they certainly may.
Mrs. Black, any questions?
No.
Ms. Pava? So there is a motion.
January, December.
I know you made an, uh, mention of it last year.
Because I mentioned that in the very beginning, and I think this can be a little confusing. Maybe it's just, you know, change, you know, you have to accept change, but I think going to calendar year is more in line with people's thinking of the whole year, not the school, the school.
So, so I guess, I know what you're suggesting is we approve the rest of this, the rest of twenty-twenty tonight, so that would take us up through December, the December eighth meeting, and not approve January through June, but rather next December, take up the calendar year, January through December twenty-one, twenty-twenty-one.
Why do we already have approved?
Well, we've already got approved.
Through.
Dr. Senkione gave us a year and a half worth.
Eighteen months.
Last December.
So we're approved through the end of June now?
Right. But if we post this on the Secretary of State's website, which we're required to do, it starts July first, twenty-twenty, and I'm, I'm just concerned that it, it is not in keeping with the other public bodies. And it is a state law requirement.
Right, that we have twelve months, but not which twelve months?
Not that I could see.
I mean, and I think people generally know that ours is the second and the fourth Tuesday of every month anyway.
Well, I thought so, and then I found out on our schedule, we're going this first Tuesday in January.
Okay, we'll get to that.
All right.
I'm not sure it makes a huge difference.
I don't either, but, um.
I'm willing to approve this, I'm willing to approve whatever the majority feels like they wanna do.
If there's a compromise, if you approve this, we can certainly post a calendar, uh, calendar year calendar on the, uh, the website that Ms. Farmworth recognizes, then you still have this as far as the school year calendar, I don't know if that works for everyone.
Yeah, I just have one if we're gonna have.
But we need to do one or the other.
Well, let's just take a vote. That's how we decide these things.
All right, so there is a, there is a motion to approve this calen-, this schedule as submitted, uh, and then it's been seconded. Is there any other discussion? And I will ask for a vote, all those in favor? Opposed? Okay, the motion passes three to two. Item twelve H. Nope.
We did that.
Twelve J.
Twelve J.
Town Farm Playground Resolution, Ms. Palish?
Um, just quickly, um, as you all may or may not, well, no, I'm sure you all know, that, um, the, uh, Town Farm, uh, Renovation Committee is going, uh, putting in tomorrow, uh, the entire grant packet, and, um, Mr. Guilfillan had just reached out and asked if we would like to support, and I said, I believe we would happily, so I put together a resolution for, uh, the board to, uh, consider.
I make a motion to accept that resolution? And I thought that was a good job, to have a lot of nice information in there that we can use for other things.
And I will say that I pulled that right from Mr. Guilfillan's grant.
Yeah, it's good, it's good stuff, though.
Never redo work that's already there.
It's good.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Can I just ask one question?
Of course.
Because the actual resolution you sent to us after our packets, where will, it'll just be in the minutes where it will be documented in the, with the school?
I think it has to be forwarded to, it has to be included in the.
Really just administrative.
Yeah.
I just wanna make sure it gets captured in this meeting's paperwork.
Yeah. It got sent to you, right, Peter?
Mm-hmm.
I gave him a copy.
It's in the packet.
It's not in our packet.
No.
No, I sent it to all of you, and then I did give Peter, and then I gave Peter a separate, a copy separately.
So, so, Ms. Palish, will we send this right along out to him after we vote?
Yes, as soon as Dr. Larkin signs it, I will, um, scan it and get it over to him to include in the packet tomorrow. I do wanna note, um, one change, and I will make that, we can just scratch it out, is we are going to do six pickleball courts and not eight. That was a recommendation of the National Pickleball.
Okay, six pickleball courts.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll, we'll make that change on the resolution before it's signed.
So I'll, I'll make that motion as amended to six pickleball courts. And I'll also say that the health and wellness, um, as I spoke before, and the Tiverton Prevention also sent a letter from, um, Rebecca Elwell and Polly Allen and myself, so I, I hope this all goes forward, it'll be wonderful.
Do we, Mrs. Black, do, should we have taken a vote on the health and wellness communication? Because it's a subcommittee?
We just, it was just a consensus of these.
Oh, wasn't a, a written?
No, no, no written, it was a consensus of the Health and Wellness Committee, and I came here that night and said it.
Right, and I know you did at the Town Council as well, I just wasn't sure if you had done something in writing.
No, 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 no. They just sent a letter in writing, Rebecca and, um, Polly and myself.
All right, someone explained what pickleball was to me last time, I can't remember what it is, but at any rate.
It's been quite a hot topic.
Any other discussion? Yeah. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. And yes, thank you very much, Ms. Palish, for doing that. Okay, item twelve K, teacher hearing, Dr. Senkione?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, this evening, I'm gonna ask our principal to describe to you the reasons why we are seeking your recom-, your approval, uh, for a motion to terminate a chemistry teacher at the high school. So with that being said, I'm gonna call upon our high school principal, Ms. Ashley, to provide you some of the details.
Yes. So it's my recommendation to terminate Ms. Jenga due to multiple, uh, failed attempts to respond to ongoing concerns since the beginning of the school year. Uh, and this is after several, um, attempts and ongoing supports, um, at varying levels, both within and outside of the classroom. And unfortunately, uh, we did not see a positive response. So I felt it as my duty, um, that I couldn't in good faith, uh, continue, uh, with her, with her role as a teacher in the classroom, because it was jeopardizing the students' learning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, so at this time, will you take it?
Yeah, uh, you're, Mrs. Jenga, I assume? Would you like to speak to the committee? Address the committee?
Thank you. Chairperson, Dr. Larkin. Vice Chairperson, Dr. Fennels. Members of the Tiverton Committee, School Committee, teachers, and guests, my name is Shanti Jenga. I was a chemistry teacher here at Tiverton High School up until twenty-fifth November, two thousand nineteen. On twenty-sixth November, I received a letter stating that I have been placed on administrative leave pending investigations, followed by a possible termination effective third December, two thousand nineteen. I dispute this termination, and more importantly, I dispute the language in the termination letter. While I wasn't without flaws, I have never shied away from hard work. I arrive at six forty-five A M. most days, leave well after four P M., sometimes even later. I work all the time I work, and yet I wasn't going anywhere. I felt like I was taking one step forward and two steps backward. The workload of teaching five classes, sessions per teacher, is simply setting the teacher to fail, especially if the fifth class involves developing entire curriculum from scratch. While I'm a certified chemistry teacher, I am not certified astronomy. I'm not certified in astronomy. I only agreed to teach because in the past, I have developed curriculums as I go, for example, personal finance, physical science, and health. However, the way scheduling was done here, with teachers being pulled, uh, senior lounge duty, cafeteria duty, in addition to five sessions, left little time to develop course material, and even no time to stop and think through instructions for the rest of the classes. I did express my concern in writing to the principal, no response. I was very excited to start teaching at Tiverton High School. I prepared detailed lesson plans for the entire semester, including textbooks, resources that I plan on te-, using, and I shared this with my coworker at the beginning of the semester. We agreed that the lesson plan covered all that is required, and we agreed that we may tell the story differently, however, but we would both land at the same time, same place for the media exam. A month and a half later, my coworker, Ms. Kusumano, was noticeably distraught. She stated that she has been fighting tooth and nail from being turned part-time. A week after that, Ms. Kusumano was in my class scripting my instructions. Members of the school committee, any coaching, scripting, documentation on me coming from Ms. Kusumano is subject to bias. I incorporated technology in instruction, as challenging as it can be. I was the first to even attempt to use Z space, three D learning, in my instruction, which has been sitting in the science office for more than a year. I attended training suggested by the school, I even wrote positive feedback on the training to the principal, no response. This possible termination could be retaliation by the principal because I wrote to the superintendent about the unsafe gas valves in the lab that didn't meet OSHA standards and my concerns for student safety. This possible termination could be my constant request to purchase textbooks for astronomy students for the last three months. Small-town Tiverton, we pay our administrators not sixty, not seventy, not eighty, hundreds of thousands of dollars to administrators, but we have no budget to purchase twelve textbooks that cost eighty dollars for our students. I've also been unfairly attacked by Ms. Barbara DeSantis and members of her department. Perhaps because I elected not to join the union, Ms. DeSantis approached me many times, I declined the offer. In my mind, all I wanna do is teach chemistry. I didn't wanna be part of a union. Despite that, there has been unauthorized deductions for union dues from my paycheck. Interestingly, the union, union creditor backed the amount deducted once he realized conflict of interest within the union. Ms. Perry, a special educator, who wants to be recognized as a co-teacher, but refuses to take the burden of co-teaching. Co-teaching is not reteaching. Co-teaching, when done well, offers benefits for both students and the teachers. When not done well, it can be confusing and downright frustrating for all involved. I'm alleging this possible termination was fabricated by, by Ms. DeSantis, whom later coaxed the principal. So members of the school committee, there's more to this termination than meets the eye. Last but not least, I received two formal correspondence from the superintendent's office. The first letter spelt my name incorrectly, the personnel has accurate information of each employee. The second correspondent stated the date incorrectly, I'm just gonna look at this. It says here, you are getting this notice because your coverage under the plan will end on March thirtieth, two thousand nineteen, due to end of employment. I was not even here March thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. I was, I only started here in September. So I'm just stating this because how should I classify these errors, as intentional decisions or malfeasance? I thank the school committee for this hearing. We are in the business of educating our kids. Let's not take the focus off that. I live right here in Rhode Island, teaching chemistry is my bread and butter. I respectfully request the school committee for an amicable resolution to the situation. Thank you.
So, Dr. Senkione, I understand, um, this is a preliminary hearing only, um, what is your recommendation?
My recommendation is to accept the recommendation of the principal, and now the recommendation of the superintendent to, uh, continue with this termination this evening.
Is there a motion to that effect from the committee?
I'll make the motion to accept the recommendation of Dr. Senkione.
I'll make the motion to accept the recommendation of Dr. Senkione.
The recommendation.
For termination, yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item thirteen A, one-to-one parent and student handbook.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. In your packet here, we just wanted to make sure the committee had a copy of the handbook that we've been providing to all these assemblies we've had moving forward. This clearly, I know you've had a couple of chances to look at this, but it really outlines all the factors of our one-to-one program that go into place on January second and third.
Okay. Have we already approved, we don't need to vote on this?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, item fourteen, any questions of Dr. Senkione? Item fourteen A, new policy three ninety-two, environmental quality, first reading.
Dr. Larkin.
Yes, Mrs. Palish.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, Dr. Larkin, I'm going to ask that we defer discussion and any votes on policy numbers A and B.
To January tenth?
I think it's January seventh, according to the schedule.
Oh, that's right.
Yes.
Or until our next regular meeting.
There we go.
So we need a motion to continue those two?
Just those two, yes.
Yep.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Falling over each other there, get, all those in favor?
Yes.
All right. And fourteen C, remove policy eleven ninety-seven-three, which was replaced by policy eleven eighty-four, Dr. Senkione.
Yes, you approved policy eleven eighty-four, which is our acceptable use policy, but we didn't make the step to delete policy eleven seventy-three. So a technical matter just to remove that policy.
Can I have a motion to remove policy number seventy-three?
Make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yay, one less policy.
We're up to fifteen announcements, scheduling a budget workshop. So when we met last time, we had discussed having a budget workshop on December sixteenth, but there were conflicts that have arisen for that date. We had also discussed the seventeenth, but that is the concert night, which I think some of us want to attend. And so the sort of first hard stop for us is January fifteenth, and we're going to get to that in a minute, where we have to have by that date a joint meeting of the Budget Committee, Town Council, and this committee as a budget workshop. It's usually pretty brief.
Any dates they're recommending?
Uh, yes, and I guess we could skip to that first, and then we could, so the date that I got most recently from Ms. Hollenbeck, because the acting chair of the Budget Committee was January second, that's a Thursday. Then the third, and I think the sixth, seventh, and eighth were also in play. Those are the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday of the following week.
Well, we have a meeting on the seventh.
Right, which, nobody seems to know why we were on the seventh instead of the fourteenth.
I don't know.
Do you know?
I don't, I mean, that's, I like to think there was a reason. I mean, certainly if you want to.
It's posted, I mean.
Switch it, there's certainly time.
So, so I could say to the Budget Committee, maybe either the sec, they need probably two, if not three, dates to work with. We're talking eighteen, twenty-three of us, you know, board members.
May I suggest, if we are going to keep our meeting on the seventh, that we perhaps dovetail it that evening? I mean, we typically do meet here.
Yep.
Because of the size of the room.
So how, so, so that would be one thing, would be to the seventh at six o'clock here.
Dr. Larkin?
Yep. Yes, Mrs. Black.
So last night at the Town Council, they were talking about this at the end of the meeting.
Yep.
And they did say, somebody had mentioned December, and they all said, "No, no, no."
Yeah.
So then they said that would be better, like around what Mrs. Farnsworth was saying, around the seventh. They all seemed to want to do that.
Right, so.
And she said she had spoken to, Mrs. Hilton, said she had spoken to Dr. Larkin.
Yeah, she had, I mean, we've had a couple of conversations between Mrs. Mello, Ms. Hollenbeck, Ms. Hilton, and me, trying to find a date.
Those meetings don't take long.
They don't?
Then we go out.
Presumably, they don't take long.
But they expressed the opinion they'd like it to take a little longer than one minute, like usually.
Yeah, well.
That's what she said, you said.
We'll, we'll, we'll see what, you know, we'll see the meeting when we get it gets there.
So let's, let's tell them Tuesday, the seventh, at six.
All right, are people open to the second if they come back? Again, I probably need three dates to work with them.
Just give them two.
It's, it's open, it's also first day back at work for many of us.
Yep.
Can we give them the sixth and the seventh?
I can give them whatever is the committee's pleasure.
I'd be open to any.
With our strong preference being the seventh?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Why don't we do that?
Yeah, that sounds good.
Sixth and the seventh, with a strong preference to the seventh.
Did you say at six o'clock?
At six.
Okay.
Because it can be right before our meeting then. Because we're already here. We do have a policy meeting that night, but we'll just move it.
Council will be meeting on the sixth, right?
The other first and third, yep.
So if they come back and say, "Yeah, we can do the sixth, but we want to meet at Town Hall," anybody object to that?
At six, that's fine.
Yeah, okay. All right, I have discharged my duty, at least for tonight, on that. So then the next thing was scheduling a budget workshop where we can have a more detailed, focused discussion of the budget.
And we've done that typically on a Saturday?
Yeah, we can do it on Sunday, could do it on Christmas. I wanted to.
How about the fourth?
Demonstrate our deep commitment to public service by doing it on Christmas, but.
The fourth, what, actually?
We won't have the press here.
Let me tend to you my resignation right now.
Saturday, Saturday mornings, I, I, I guess we've typically done that. Ms. Roderick, is that, I mean, is that an issue for you?
What, Saturday the fourth, will you be ready?
Peter?
Yeah, we're going to have it all completed over the vacation week, so we'll issue you a budget.
No fun, no vacation for you!
Sally and Lily. How do the Saturday the fourth sound to you guys?
That's fine with me.
Starting at nine? Yep.
Saturday the fourth, nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock?
I don't know, maybe you guys are easy.
Five o'clock somewhere.
And that'll be, that'll be here, in this room?
Mimosa's.
We'll get a one-day lico lace up in the town council.
All right.
Sally, you can work that out, right? Would you prefer a meeting in, it's a more convenient location, I think, intimate, down in the Miss Donnelly Road, just the conference room?
Yeah, I like, I like.
I like it down.
If, if that's, is that all right with you?
And she has mints, so that's good, she has mints.
You can project down there.
Are we switching places?
I'm suggesting it, I just think it's a better place to have a conversation.
Yep, so January fourth at eight, at nine a.m. in Amy's office.
Yeah, that too.
All right, and then, under attendance, that was actually a placeholder for that. So we had a sort of not fabulous report on our, our absenteeism rates, and I had wanted that to be on an agenda item at some point.
Okay.
So that was supposed to have been down under the, the meetings. I don't know if we can try and address that at one of our meetings in January.
You may recall in our data presentation where I showed you the star ratings of every school, and attendance was a factor in that, and they brought that out, so I don't know if you want to get into more details.
Well, I guess my question is, why are the numbers what they are?
So they're being an agenda item.
Right, that's, right. That's, that's that, that's why it's there, it's to be an agenda item, it's not.
Exactly, so let's have it at a future meeting.
Yeah.
Is that student attendance or?
It was both, was student attend, so I had, I guess, three levels of questions. One was, how is the number generated to begin with? And what seems to be driving it? Because we are outliers compared to some other districts that we should be comparable to. And, you know, what do we do about it? Is there anything we can do about it? So.
Future meeting.
Yeah, and you know, is it all, is it something that Rye generates? Is it something that except generates?
Rye collects all the data.
You know, sort of, where, where does that number come from? And is it because somebody went out from, with some devastating illness or something? I don't know, anyway, that's what I was curious about. All right, so then, anything else? Have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, was that really why?
All those in favor? All right, we're on.